All right, I got the thumbs up. So I will call to order the Board of Education's special meeting for May 28th, 2019. As is it a special meeting, we are addressing some time-sensitive issues and things that we need to have action on here, so we've got a very brief agenda. We will be skipping, I'm sorry, we will be foregoing the public comment for tonight and working through our agenda as efficiently as we can. Having called it to order, we have action on the agenda. Are there any changes, Mr. Scheiger?
There are not.
So I would entertain motion to approve the agenda as presented. Tom, second. Motion by Tom, seconded by Rick. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion clearly passes. First agenda item, open enrollment. Action on 2019-2020, open enrollment applications.
This was the original reason for this meeting. Just that other important things got added onto it as well. I gave you a summary sheet with numbers of in-and-out students for application for the 1920 school year and then also the historical numbers from 1819, so you can see who applied and then out of those applications who actually went through with the open enrollment. This year for 1920, we're at 61 applications in, 104 applications to, excuse me, 61 in and 90 out. And then as given to your packet too, there is one student that we're denying due to an expulsion.
I make a motion to accept the open enrollment numbers as presented.
Second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Karen to accept the open enrollment applications as summarized in our packets here. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Open enrollments are approved as presented. HR is next. Mr. Westrick?
Okay, we had a meeting on May 23rd. We had three items on the agenda. We tabled one. The first item that we talked about was the Benefits Advisory Group as a subcommittee. And as you know, we have a Benefit Advisory Group that has been going, ongoing for two or three years now, talking with members of the staff and what they value as a good benefit package. This year, we did do a lot of changes in our benefit package, but next year, we're looking at doing some potential changes or variations from the package that we have now. Chris brought it to our attention that we should probably start the process of the subcommittee yet this summer in more of an informational format, telling people what an SHA is, talking about wellness, talking about matrix and things like that. So what Chris has suggested is that we form a subcommittee. Some of the board members, any board members could volunteer to serve on that. One word of caution is that there's going to be three meetings probably this summer, and whoever volunteers to be on it as a board would have to make sure that they have the time to devote for those three meetings, because it's very important to have consistent board participation in that subcommittee. So this is just an informational piece right now. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, you actually hit it right on the head, Tom. We're also going to be talking with Associated Financial, which Al Jaeger is the one that helps facilitate those Benefits Advisory Group meetings. And we're going to set up those three dates coming up here within the next two weeks, probably right before school ending. And then we'll share that out with the Human Resources Committee. And if other board members are interested, we can also forward that on to the rest of you as well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions about the subgroup for the Benefits Advisory Group? The next item on the agenda for tonight was the one that we tabled from our committee meeting, and that is the discussion possible action on the 20, our 1920 support staff compensation. As you know, we have gone through the administration and we've gone through the teachers. And if you recall, we, as a board unanimously voted to have a 3% increase for the support staff. And that's basically what the information that you were presented in the packet shows.
Absolutely, Tom. One point of clarification, the administrative assistants are not included on that because the HR committee wanted to look further at that compensation structure. So we are working on that to try to bring something to the board on the June 10th meeting. So more information to come along with that soon. But the packet of information that the board has received outlines every other support staff group. And I had a conversation come up and I emailed all of you about it, but just one point of clarification is there's the salary piece for those that are benefit eligible, and then there's a per hour difference for those that are not eligible for benefits. So that's where the two types, if you will, employee groups are listed on there.
Are there any questions about the support staff salary?
Chris, that was a 3% increase?
That is correct, Karen.
Thank you.
I would make a motion that we accept the support staff compensation package as presented.
I'll second. We'll grab Mike on that. So motion from Tom and seconded by Mike to accept the support staff compensation package or presentation as outlined to us here. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion clearly passes.
The third item on the agenda for this evening is discussion possible action on superintendent search process and services. On the 20th, we had two presentations. One was from WASD, which is Wisconsin Association of District Administrators, and one from WASB, which is Wisconsin Association of School Boards. The information that you have in your packet is from WASB. They're pretty much rolled out their services. They put together a tentative schedule, and basically the purpose of their proposal was to find a full-time superintendent. They supplied a lot of information. They had a price breakdown in there, I believe they, anywhere from whatever to $10,000. We did have a phone conversation with John Bales. He's the head of the WASDA, and his organization deals very much with finding interim superintendents. They don't really have an arm that does a full-time search for full-time superintendents. We asked quite a few questions. There's no fee for the services from WASB because of Dr. Scheiger being a member of that organization. The only fee there would be is if there was some postings, which would be very minimal. So I guess at this point, the recommendation from the HR committee is to look for a interim superintendent for the 1920 school year. And with that, Chris?
Really quick, I remember at the last board meeting Karen had asked about national posting, and WASB said that they do do national. So when the board decides to go through that, maybe if we're looking at this fall and winter to start that process, they would be able to help out with that national search too. So it encompasses everywhere. And as part of that, up to $10,000, Tom, from referring to.
Well, WASB also said that there are five other school districts. Right now, they're in the same situation that we are. And they weren't really too confident about the candidate pool. It's a terrible time to look for a superintendent, a full-time superintendent, because all the contracts have already been signed by this point in most districts anyway. Again, as the HR committee recommends, to look at WASDA to search for an interim for the 1920 school year. So I'll open up for any discussion at this point.
I think an interim would take a lot less time, you know, and probably most of them are retired superintendents or whatever that have a proven track record and stuff. We just thought that if you went to a regular superintendent, I think it was three months at least, and it would just be a long period.
And we don't really have three months not to have some of the inter application.
I would add, Tom, just by virtue of being president, I suppose they didn't have well to call, I've had two people reach out to me that are interested in our potential superintendent position. So I had a phone conversation with both gentlemen, 15, 20 minutes in length. Both seem very, very capable and have the background that would be very appealing, I guess. So short of, obviously, I could not tell them much other than we were finding our way through the process and trying to pick our path a little bit. But it was encouraging that there are folks out there that have an interest. Whatever action we take here, those could possibly... You mean you can't hear me? Are you serious?
For the audience online.
I'm sorry. But at any rate, there is interest. So we need to identify our path here, I think, and we will find some options.
I also think it's important to note that at our committee level, we very much touched on what we are getting as feedback from the administrative team and the district office, that we really need to make sure that we have leadership in place to give that support and drive that direction for this school year. And that's another reason why we were making the recommendation to go down the route of an interim, so that way we have that in place sooner rather than later, so that they have who they need to go to.
I would, I would take that the process would be that John Bales would give us a list of candidates that are out there, and we would go through a new process in the entire board, same as any other position, district administrator position. I think in the meantime, we should all be thinking of some characteristics of an individual that we may want to see in both an interim superintendent and also a full-time superintendent. The administrative staff has done that already, and I think it's important that we, at least in the back of our minds, would come up with three or four characteristics that we would like to see for an interim. Any other questions or comments?
Have we used either WASB or WASDA for searches in the past?
Rick, we have. For the position that, when we hired Dr. Scheiger for his position, we did. And then I believe when Mike Garro and Bernie as well, we used him from WASB, or going through WASB.
I think that way too, I think.
Okay.
I have them for three forms. They're very thorough.
And if I remember correctly, up to that $10,000 was what they charged when we hired Tim for the position.
So if the board decides to go the interim route, then a thorough search for a full-time would begin later in the year. Usually those searches start in November, December, January timeframe. I believe that will be to our best interest, because then you'd have people that are out there looking, and hopefully we would have a much, a much better candidate pool at that time than we have right now. So if there are no other questions or comments, I'd make a motion to contract with WASDA for services to assist in the search for an interim superintendent for the 1920 school year.
Just to be clear, Tom, if we do this, they don't have fees per se, and if they would post it for us, I think he shared with me a couple hundred dollars type of money spent. So we're not spending much money here. We're basically agreeing to use their resources and their expertise to help us identify a list of potentials.
And when we talked to him about the fees, it was if we were having him post a full-time superintendent search position.
Okay.
That's what he was referring to for the fees, not for the interim.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion from Tom, second from Diamond. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the aforementioned motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion clearly passes.
Mr. President, that concludes the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Finance. Mike and Diamond co-chair this, so we're going to let them arm wrestle. No, I'm sorry.
Diamond chaired that committee meeting, so we'll let her give us an update.
I am going to start by having Mr. Goddick come up and talk to us a little bit about our proposed meal prices for this year.
Thank you. So basically, every year since 2011, the USDA enacted regulation to help school districts, specifically food service departments, make sure that we're making enough money in the department so that we have fund balance and then make sure that we're not charging less for school meals than it costs to produce the meal. It also helps to make sure that the funds intended for the free and reduced-priced lunches are not subsidizing paid student meals. So that being said, since 2011, they have mandated that we pretty much raise prices 10 cents every year, up until last year. Last year, they allowed us to have a waiver if we had a fund balance, which we did. So last year, we chose to freeze the prices. This year, they are also giving us that exemption if we so choose, but I recommend that we raise the prices by 10 cents with the, what am I thinking of now? With the cost of goods and services going up last year and then this year, food prices keep going up. And as you know, in business, things don't tend to get cheaper. So I'm recommending that we choose to not do the exemption this year and to raise prices accordingly. So in your packet, you have what I'm proposing for the district, and then there's another sheet that I supplied to you that shows what other districts in our co-op are charging for those same prices. So recommended motion would be to approve the 1920 school fees and meal prices, and I don't believe the school fees are going up this year. So.
And if I recall from our committee level, based on like the calculation tool that you have, it would have been a 15 cent rate if we followed through, but our cap is 10 cents?
Correct, yeah. And that's with the inflation thing. So the inflation from last year and this year, using their calculator that they give us to plug in the meal prices, correct, we should be going at 15 cents, but we can only go up 10 cents, so.
Would anyone have any discussion on that? Any questions for Michael?
I'll make a motion to accept the increase in the school fees and meal prices as proposed.
I'll second. Okay, motion by Karen, seconded by Mike to accept the proposed meal price increases as presented by Mr. Goddick. Any other further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And?
And we will go again with Mike to give us some information on our account balance from our negative inactive lunch accounts.
That's correct. So negative inactive lunch accounts, we should sort of be cleaning these up every year, and we haven't done. So right now, we have 226 inactive negative family lunch accounts sitting out there. Some date back to, I can date them back to when we switched over from RevTrak to Skyward side, like that was 2013. So they've been sitting out there for quite a while, and I'm looking to get our books cleaned up in food service this year. So in order to do that, I need your assistance, because I can't use food service funds to clean up these accounts. USDA kind of gives guidance on that, says that I'm not allowed to do that. So I'm here tonight requesting your assistance to helping pay off the total negative inactive family accounts, which totals $1,914.85.
Mike, are you saying that that probably was something that should have been taking place on a yearly basis?
It's my understanding that's the case, yes. A memo did come out in 2016 giving more clarification on that from the USDA. So I'm just looking to get my books cleaned up, so.
And these are from our discussion at committee level, these accounts are accounts of people that have finally left the district. So we've tried to reach out and collect those funds back, but once people leave, there's not much you can do. So if you're looking back over the course of six or seven years, overall, we're not in too bad a shape, I would say. It could be a lot worse, but ideally, moving forward, we won't see transfers like this every year. They'll be much smaller.
Correct. And we do a very good job of trying to get families when they transfer to other school districts or leave for whatever reason, to get their fines and fees paid. Wendy McManus does an excellent job, as well as Wendy Webb and Sue Millard and Nutrition Team Office to try and get those families to, you know, pay off their accounts before they leave, so.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of $1,914.85 from Fund 10 to Fund 50 to offset the negative inactive lunch accounts.
Motion by Diamond, seconded by Tom to transfer from Fund 10 to Fund 50, $1,914.85 to balance our school lunch accounts.
I do have one. I apologize, I do have one question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, just.
Go ahead, Mike.
So do we know what account this is being transferred from? I know it's coming from Fund 10, but has been decided which account within Fund 10 is going to be coming from? Not at this time.
Fund 10 is usually Fund Balance, isn't it?
Right. No, it's our, it'll be our operating budget. And so what we'll do is we'll, when we reconcile things at the end of the year, we'll, we'll make sure that's part of that reconciliation, and so it's coming from the general fund of Fund 10. So it's not like, especially, I don't have the account number, what the account number is coming from at this point, but.
There'll be a journal entry that will come. There'll be also a series of additional fund transfers that come, for example, being from the school expenditures in January, they'll go from 10 to 40 now. All of those journal entries will come at the end of the year.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anybody else? Otherwise, motion and second on the floor to approve this. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I was, I had approved.
Okay, sorry, thank you. Motion carries. And Finance, Diamond on C.
Jerry, do you want to come up and help me tackle this one?
Thank you. As outlined in your memo, there was a couple of different options that were discussed at the Finance Committee for the transition of Business Office Oversight. In particular, a proposal from Baird was received in addition to some outreach that was done to CISA V. There was a couple of different phone calls and emails, exchanges between both proposed, well, I could say both entities that had expressed some interest. In particular, our reach to CISA V, they were not able to provide a proposal. However, we did have a phone call with Mike Coltes, who is the director of their interim services group. He said that their team is extremely strapped right now, but they did have one person who might have some interest. They provided a quote of up to $800 a day for that service, but he was able to state that he was not able to confirm at the very earliest until Friday of this week as to whether or not that one person would be interested or not. Baird obviously submitted a proposal, and that proposal was attached to your packet. The Finance Committee also reviewed that as an option for consideration as well, with all of the details there outlined in the memo as well. Their cost of services is up to $950 a day, $50 for work outside of a normal day, in addition to charges for attendance at school board meetings and presentations. At the business office, as indicated at the committee level, this particular time of year, summer months are actually among the busiest for the business office due to the fact that they're closing out the existing school year, that being the 1819 budget, the development of the 1920 budget, as well as the startup of a new fiscal year and all of the compensation adjustments in addition to all of the new employees that are hired. So it's a, it's a very, very busy time for that office, both Human Resources and the Business Office, working together in partnership to make sure that all of those things that need to get done, get done. The required financial reporting to the Department of Public Instruction, in addition to the seven-day annual audit takes place all during the summer months. So there will clearly be a need for support to the existing staff. Wendy LaPointe is here tonight. Deborah Yetzen, I believe she's home with her child tonight, have done some amazing work during the absence of our business manager. We'll talk a little bit about that later when we get to the bond issuance and things like that. But when you're talking about four out of 16 people at district office being gone within the next five weeks, there's none of the existing people here at district office having what's called the 5008 business administrator license. I cannot emphasize the critical importance of you folks making a decision tonight, or if not tonight, then very, very soon, so that there's support in place for these folks.
And speaking with Wendy and Deborah, that was one of the very first things that we talked about, and I think we've talked about it over and over again, is having someone in this position quickly. They're doing a great job managing those day-to-day tasks, but there's very big oversight issues that needs to happen at that level, which we would have, we had with two employees and are going to not have with any employees here very soon. I did call and talk to Tim, and he said that even with CISA V, that they maybe would be able to give us someone, unsure of what the hours would be, even at their rate of $800 a day being cheaper than Baird, they couldn't commit to us any real timeline of what that would look like, or in addition to dialogue on how long this contract would have to be for and what flexibility. So it wasn't, we asked very much to be able to compare apples to apples when looking at two different solutions. So far, CISA V hasn't exactly been forthcoming with that. We had a pretty lengthy conversation at committee level about it. Mike, or Joe, do you want to add anything?
Well, I would add that the resource available through Baird, this lady named Diane Purtsborn, is a, is a resource and an expertise that is probably rare for us to access. She teaches the business manager course at UW-Wyler. So to bring in that level of professionalism and guidance, I think is a huge, huge asset for us.
We did something very similar with Nutrition Department last year by bringing in a consultant and using that similar structure of how many days a week, and that really seemed to help get that back on track. I truly think in the short term, to have that solution here and to be able to reevaluate it after the annual meeting and have that time for ideally our interim superintendent that we were talking about at the last point on the agenda, that gives us that time to make sure all of our i's are dotted and t's are crossed very thoroughly with a very good expertise, and then have that flexibility that if we have somebody else lined up to be hired, we're covered up until that point.
One concern we have with Baird, if not anything on their service, but just, I guess you're from Baird, right? The cost, you know, is how many days, you know, like they'll say, well, we figure one to two days a week, but all of a sudden it's three days, several weeks or something. Is there a way we could get a, a cost estimate that would be for the time period, I guess that's what I'm saying, you know, to say that we want you to do the audits and get the budget till October, roughly, can we get a set price, I mean, not to exceed?
Sure, absolutely. And that's a very fair question, and I explained to Diane, I said that we want to have this conversation with the board tonight. Obviously, you can provide that direction to us at the staff level. I think among the important things that the board will have to recognize in some of this stuff is, I completely understand and appreciate as a district parent and a taxpayer, the desire to control the cost, but the work is... a taxpayer, the desire to control the cost, but the work is what the work is.
I understand.
And there's going to be a lot of it. And I just think that it's important that, that they're forthright in that, in the fact that there's referendum expenditures that are going to have to be placed into ADM, and then all of that monitored. And although they won't be involved in that particular decision, some existing staff will be involved in that. So, while we can certainly put parameters of a cost not to exceed either by week or by month or things like that, you know, they're going to want to be here to provide the, the support necessary to staff to make sure that the district doesn't get into any trouble, doesn't miss any DPI required reports and things like that. They're going to be here to provide the services that are needed. I can't imagine that this is based on the skill sets of the people that are there, a huge moneymaker for them as much as it is a support to us. And they're obviously not doing it for free, but it's, it's not something that I would suggest is among of all of the wheelhouse of services that they provide, probably not their greatest moneymaker. And so we, I'm happy to, if the, if the District Board of Education says, hey, we want to put some cost containment parameters on this thing, we can certainly go back to that with them and say, hey, not to exceed $10,000 a month, not to exceed three days a week. I can tell you from a staffing level perspective, they shared they would be shocked if they could even do more than three days a week, because they'll probably have two people that will help service us. It'll be Diane and one of her colleagues. And, and our district office staff was saying, we hope to be able to get three days a week. So, you know, doing the math on that, you know, we're talking probably somewhere in that $10,000 to $12,000 a month.
So it would start July 1st, you know, through our budget time.
Yes, I would suggest it probably would start actually maybe even a little bit before then to allow some transition time. I would hate to just think that Tim and I would be gone and they would have to learn all that stuff on their own. Obviously, Deborah and Wendy would be here, but I think we'd like to at least provide some acclamation period for those folks, maybe the third week in July or something like that, to say, okay, here's where we're at, you know, I'm sorry, June, thank you, and, and initiative, so that that way they have at least some backstory on some of the where things are at.
I'm just wondering, and I don't know, Jerry, if you can answer this, or somebody from the Finance Committee. Has anybody checked with Wasbo to see if there's a retired business management manager that we might be able to hire on interim, much like you would with a superintendent?
I asked Diane Perlsborn if that was a common thing, and when Mary Ellen was still here and asked her about some of these transitional things, this was the group that she stirred us to. But I didn't, no one from Wasbo, I didn't like reach out and ask them as an organization specifically.
I guess I, at least to myself, I would like to see that explored. You know, I know we don't want to prolong this forever, because this is a kind of sensitive issue, but if we can spend less than $10,000 a month, unless I think we may do what we have with somebody that's already done this job.
Well, remember, Diane has done the job, and she teaches it as well, and I understand the, the cost piece, but I think that in a situation like this, we can certainly, if the board wishes to direct us to, to look at or to contact Wasbo and, and see if there's anybody out there, the sooner the better. I would suggest early in June as possible, so they get to learn the system, and maybe they're not here three days a week, but in June, but at least to start the, the affirmation period, it's going to be very important. And the, I guess I would, I would hate to see that, that there are concerns coming out of the audit, because we're trying to figure out what to do. I think we need to kind of really be thinking about let's, in turn agreement as soon as possible, and I guess if, if there is a desire for us to go to, to look at, at Wasbo, we can do that. I guess I would ask that we then get back together prior to June 10th to have a meeting to, to sign a contract, because by June 10th, we're going to want somebody here, at least on a part-time basis.
Yeah, I agree with Karen and everything she said, and actually, that was one of the questions I was going to ask, so I'm in agreement with Karen.
You know, I'm not saying that Diane is not qualified to do this, and we shouldn't hire Baird. I just want to make sure that we've looked at all of our options first.
Karen, are you looking at hiring someone on a full-time basis, or just as a consultant basis?
Um, at this point, I would probably just say a consultant, because I truly believe that whoever our next superintendent is, should have that ability to hire if they want a business manager, or want to keep things as they are, have that right to do that.
I personally think that, excuse my nasty voice, that we were somewhat under the gun. We've got someone how many miles away that's an expert in this, she teaches it, she's had experience in it, and I think she would be a wonderful resource for our business office employees that we have there. And I know that's very important to them, to have someone they can turn to. I'm sure they're going to be somewhat prudal in not calling them and asking them questions that they already know the answers to, but I, I think it would be mistake if we can take advantage of the expertise right in their neighborhood.
I guess I'll weigh in just a little bit, too, I've had the background on all this discussion, and I think, like my former comments, were that the resource available to us is very valuable. And I thought maybe as a bit of a compromise, you know, the Baird's original proposal was July to December with the per diems that you saw on your, on your packet there. I'm feeling like we need them at least through the annual meeting, so maybe July, August, and September. I did rough calculation, and that's 12 weeks, notwithstanding a little transition time that might happen prior to that. Couple days a week, maybe some weeks with three, so I just took 12 weeks at two and a half days is 30 days. The per diem is just under $1,000, so if we capped it at $30,000, it won't break us. It's the same money we would pay a full-time business manager, and, and it would give us the safety net as we transition into a superintendent and through all of our annual reporting and financial obligations. I think it's a huge asset to us, and I think we should do it.
And I would say opening it up to the route of looking at a potential interim business manager as a consultant through an organization, then leads to us putting the time on interviewing people as well, which is not necessarily a bad thing, but that is time. And between the business managership availability, to be, being able to have the time to transition, rather than being down to the wire with interviewing, is going to be very important, because anyone that works in that type of atmosphere, you need to have time to transition somebody into that role, to make sure that they're walking in caught up to speed, not trying to get caught up to speed the first few weeks, because that's when you will start to miss things, and then we're putting our district at further risk.
And just to be clear on the Wasbo option, I, I did call their office, I didn't get a response. It is, that is not a service that they advertise on their website, it's something that they do. Same thing with Wazduh, they don't like have it as a, as a service, like CISA V actually coordinates it as a service. That doesn't mean you call the office and you could get, yeah, hey, I know two or three people that are looking. So, I mean, if, if the board wants them to make that call, make that call, and we can come back and have a special meeting to figure it out. That, that's completely up to you.
Then was there a recommendation from the committee?
Our recommendation from the committee was to move forward with the proposal from Baird for the business support. Which we had on tonight for a motion to do so.
Do you want to put a motion on the table?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal from Baird, and I'll amend it to add up to $30,000 of cost.
As a cap of sorts.
As a cap for the business office support services as presented.
I'll second it.
Motion by Diamond, seconded by Tom, as you heard, to approve the proposed contract with Baird with a cap on it of $30,000. Is there any other discussion on that?
Joe, real quick.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure they're clear with, and obviously, we'll be talking about the referendum bonding and issuance shortly. This, this position, or Diane coming in to assist the business office through the, the transition, but also the setup for the close of this year's finances and the opening of next year's finances, is not connected with the bond issuance stuff. I just want to make sure that we're clear, so when people say if, if this passes, that there's Baird and then Baird, they are not, she will not be providing information, guidance for bond issuance, or any kind of bond, any referendum-related type of piece. I want to make sure, I don't know, verify that with Jerry.
Correct. And that's disclosed in their proposal, that they want a clear separation between both entities, with them serving as our underwriter, they do not want to be involved in this particular role in making recommendations or decisions to the board with respect to that particular issue. So that there's a clear and separate sense of understanding, so we would be coming to the board with more recommendations in those particular areas, rather than having a, their traditional business manager do that, with their serving as an interim, because both of them working for the same company, that that was fully disclosed in advance, and Diane made that clear in their proposal as well.
So there'll be no conflict of interest at all?
Correct.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll vote, I'll do a roll call here. To my left, Tom?
Yes.
Diamond?
Yes.
Joe is yes. Karen?
No.
Mike?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Brian?
No.
And Ray?
Yes.
And that is five to two. Did I count that right?
Mm-hmm.
That motion passes.
And with that, that concludes my report.
Finance is done. And we will jump ahead to referendum topic. Dr. Schreger, do you want to start this? Do you want to?
Yes, we'll have, I'll have Jerry come up and introduce our guest. We have Kevin Mullin here from Baird to discuss a couple of the items, actually, three of the items. And I'll have Dr. Schutz come up first and introduce our guest and the, the topics, so the letters A, B, and D, I believe. Thank you, and I'll, I'll turn it over quickly to, to Kevin from Baird, but just a couple of quick overview notes. The, the district participated with folks from Baird and Moody's in a bond rating call. We'll talk about that a little bit more on, on Level D. But with respect to the voter-approved referendum from April 2nd, there is approach that both the board approved with one issuance, and then now these are here at resolutions, because we've gone through the bond rating process. With the district being debt-free, we had what's known as an initial call and a rating for two different sorts of issuances. One is called a band or a bond anticipatory note, that's often used for when financing is needed immediately while projects are being designed and put together. And so that's for that $59.9 million, that's what you see in referendum or Agenda Item A, that's that bond anticipatory note. That's for that short-term financing that we need until the long-term financing is approved, and that's the resolution for Agenda Item B. Some great news that we're very, very pleased to report, that I know President Martin will talk a little bit more about, but the, the bond rating call went very, very successfully. The district secured a bond rating for its bond anticipatory notes of MiG I, which is the highest quality credit rating issuance of, for short-term borrowing notes that can be issued by the rating agency. Speaking to the health and wellness of the district and its finances, in addition to the growth in student enrollment, as well as the economic conditions in the area, helped all lead to that particular rating. For issuance of item, or Agenda Item B, the rating of AA3, which is what we were in 2013, the last time that we were rated, also cited the district's fiscal health and wellness, the strength of our local economy, in addition to its increasing student enrollment, were all cited in that as well. So what Agenda Item A is, is the legally required board authorization to issue the bond anticipatory notes. Agenda Item B is the authorization for once that is issued and a more permanent financing is secured, scheduled for later this month, for the refunding of that band into the permanent general obligation refunding as authorized by the voters on their April 2nd vote. So I don't know if there's anything else you want to add.
That was very thorough. Thanks. Thanks, Jerry. Yes, and that was a very thorough explanation, and if you don't mind, I'm going to kind of discuss all three of those topics, because they're very interrelated at once, and then certainly I'll address any of your individual questions with regard to those as we move forward. So, not to be too confusing, but I think I'll start with the rating, which is D first. As Jerry had mentioned, there are two ratings that were issued for the school district. One was the MiG I rating, which is a rating for the bond anticipation notes. That rating is the highest rating that Moody's offers for short-term notes, and it was the rating expected for this borrowing, and we were very happy about that. What that rating shows the market is that you have accessibility in the marketplace. So that anticipatory note is not secured by a levy. What it's secured by is your ability to go out into the marketplace to take out that short-term note with a long-term bond. So it, it measures your ability to have liquidity, and they gave you a MiG I rating for that purpose. The more important rating is your long-term rating, and it's probably the rating that you're more familiar with. That rating was AA3, which is the rating that you had previously. It's a very good rating for school district in Wisconsin, and I wanted to just give you a brief overview of what Moody's cited in establishing and setting that rating. So your credit strengths, they recognized your growing enrollment, which in Wisconsin is very important, because the revenue limit is tied to enrollment. Diversification and strengthening of your local tax base, which is, you know, nice to see that momentum here. Most importantly, and probably the thing that you can control the most, as a school board and as school administrative staff, stable and healthy finances. They were very happy with the, the state of the finances and financial affairs here in the district. They cited the ability to have some flexibility, they liked the fact that you had fund balance at a level of at least 16%, which is where you're at right now. And just generally, they were very, very positive on the financial strengths of the district. And then with regard to the band, the fact that you are, and AA3 reading, school district gave you good liquidity, and that, that's why they were able to give them MiG I on the short-term note. In terms of credit challenges, they cited, you know, obviously elevated debt levels, you went from being debt-free now to having debt, so obviously, that's something that will change, but it's voter-approved debt, which they recognize. And then they, they did cite tight liquidity, meaning that your cash position, so at certain times of the year, specifically when your books are closed at the end of June, you have a tight cash position, that's very common in Wisconsin school districts, and it's a function of the fact that you use your money all year long to pay salaries and expenses of the school district, but revenues come in blocky sections for schools. You get a couple large settlements for tax receipts, primarily in January and August, and then you get blocks of revenue for state aid that come in at disparate points in time. So there are points in time for school districts in Wisconsin where they have tight cash positions. Your cash position in June is relatively tight, it's because you have a conservative fund balance. Would be possible to have more flexibility if you had, for example, a 50% fund balance. School districts need to weigh the ability to have large fund balance with the need for avoiding cash flow borrowing, and that's, you know, the constant struggle. So those were the strengths and weaknesses that were recognized in the Moody's report. I'll leave copies of the report, I think it's helpful, for school board members and administrative staff to read that report, because I think it's an affirmation of some of the good work that you're doing. So, starting with the first resolution that's before you tonight, today, our underwriting desk did market, go out to the marketplace with the bond anticipation notes, the first phase of that borrowing. I'm happy to report that interest rate came in at an all-inclusive cost of 2.12%. I think that LISA had been projecting initially about 2.86% for that rate. That difference is about $34,000 a month in terms of that cost, so we were happy with that. So the first resolution is simply considering the sale of that bond anticipatory note and the rate associated with it. So that would be the first resolution. If you'd like to consider that, we can stop and you can have, entertain a motion for that and discuss it, or I could go on to the next resolution, it's really up to you. Okay, we'll have you pause one second. Sure. I think let's do these in piecemeal fashion, even though they are joined and make up the votes. Absolutely. But does anybody have any questions after that? Excellent background, I appreciate that. Thanks.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the issuance of sale of $59.90, $10.90 bond anticipation note pursuant to section.
note pursuant to Section 67.12 from 1B of the Wisconsin State Statute.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion from Tom, seconded by Diamond, as you heard. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Mr. Mullin?
Thank you. So the next resolution is what's referred to as a parameters resolution, and I think that this was discussed in terms of the phasing of the borrowing already, but the parameters resolution is a little bit different than the resolution that you just approved right now. So the resolution that you approved right now was for a bond sale that happened this morning. In order to avoid coming back to you with a special meeting at a point in time when it's, you know, appropriate to enter the long-term bond market with the long-term borrowing, it provides more flexibility to pass a parameters resolution that states, you know, kind of the general parameters of what the bond issue looks like. If the market is appropriate over the next couple of months, we would enter the bond market with your long-term bonds once all paperwork was in place, and then assuming that the bond issue fit within those parameters, met your expectations, the district president would have the ability to execute that borrowing and then report back to you obviously on the results of that sale. We feel it gives you the most flexibility with regard to moving forward with the long-term borrowing, and it just avoids kind of the cumbersome nature of having to schedule a meeting or do it on your next regularly scheduled borrowing or board meeting and lock you into that timing, so it just really does give you more flexibility. So that parameters resolution is the second resolution that's here. If in fact that parameters resolution is passed, likely what would happen is that the bonds would be marketed within the next month, a month and a half, and then if it's approved by the board president, the board president would report back at your next board meeting subsequent to that sale regarding the results of the sale.
Is there a time clock of sorts ticking while we have this bond anticipation note before we convert it to...
Yes, I believe that the bond anticipation note comes due in August, so that window would be between now and August in terms of getting that approved.
Anyone else with questions? And I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to authorize issuance of establishing a perimeter for the sale of not exceed $59.99,000 of general obligation incumbent bonds.
I'll second.
We'll grab Rick on that one, thank you. Thank you, Rick. Motion by Tom, seconded by Rick, as you heard. Without any other questions, I guess all in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. That motion clearly passes.
Thank you.
Okay, and Item C, who's going to tackle that? Mr. Schreger or Jerry?
I'll have Dr. Schutz speak to the action, or possible action on resolution authorizing the designated employees with American Deposit Management.
Thank you. As approved by the board at their last regularly scheduled meeting, ADM will be our firm that manages the proceeds from the $59.9 million bond. The contract has been established, it does authorize Wendy LaPointe and Dr. Schreger to be the ones that actually are the authorized staff members within that particular agreement if and/or when the district hires an interim superintendent, it will need to make an adjustment obviously to that, but obviously Wendy is here tonight, and those are just the designated staff members that would be authorized to make any particular changements or movements of the funds as pursuant to our agreement with the ADM. I'm sorry, Julia Hobbs as well, our accounts payable person is also an authorized person on that as well.
Are there any questions?
So with the withdrawal of the referendum proceeds, will the board be getting like regular updates of like how much was withdrawn and, I mean, not down to the specific details, but what those proceeds went to?
Yeah, part of the, Mike Huffman's report monthly will give you the financial breakdown of where the money is going, what either contracted service or product or whatever was purchased that month, along with the scope of the project, the update of that, and if applicable at that time, pictures of progress, and so that'll be part of the June 10th meeting, we'll have the initial, that initial layout of that, including the pool, the existing pool, the dollars where that's coming, some will be Fund 49, some will not be, and so you'll be getting all that in a detailed report monthly from Mike Huffman. We want him to run that report, Brian, so that way there's, for his service, and then also it's obviously outside of what, it's inclusive of what PRA and JP Connor are doing, but it's not JP Connor, PRA overseeing that.
So with that report, will there be like some traceability so you can, so one could map the items on Mr. Huffman's report back to the actual withdrawals of those, of the referendum monies?
His report will be inclusive of where the expenditures are going, and obviously the payments thereof, and that's why Julia is a part of this, with the Fund 49 piece, and so there'll be the, through the listing of the vouchers or the checks and all that kind of stuff, and that's all going to be traced and tracked, absolutely.
Okay, so there's full traceability?
Absolutely.
As we understand it, I want to be clear in this, as we understand it, the value of going with ADM is using Skyward Financials is that they have a portal. So if you have a particular question about, and this will be easier for us in terms of tracking Fund 49 expenditures, that $10,000 went to PRA for architectural design, very similar to like the reports that you currently see on your expenses, when you approve the vouchers, that it would look like that. So if that's what you're asking for, that's what we understand it to look like. Obviously, we've not yet seen one that ADM does yet other than what has been shown in their examples, and that's what they look like. So account for X expenditure to Y, this is where it went.
And part of the attraction with ADM was that it does use Skyward, so that way it links up, there's not a linking system that would potentially cause confusion, so the direct, with the direct linkage numerically and coding-wise with Skyward was very attractive to us, as well as the cost. And Wendy is here.
Did we capture all that accurately?
So when I talked to Mike Huffman, I said that, you know, we want to report every month, but I said we want to approve every dollar spent, which we would have to approve, you know, I mean, like Julia, whatever she sends out, I have to sign off on, so I said I just want the board to approve everything that goes out, you know, as a month's report or whatever.
The vouchers get approved, and so you'll have, you'll have the...
Right, so it'll all be approved.
It'll all be part of the typical process, but it'll be coded differently because it'll be Fund 49 versus Fund 10, so it's all going to be itemized out, but it'll still, it'll go through the regular process. I think from, to Brian's point about the tracking of things, the attraction of having it run through Skyward just makes it easier to do that, because we're very familiar with that system.
Any questions? Any other questions? Hearing none, I will leave a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing designated employees to order the deposit or withdrawal of referendum proceeds with the American Deposit Management.
I'll second that.
Motion by Diamond, seconded by Tom, as you heard, for the aforementioned resolution. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? That clearly passes. I think that suffices on the referendum. I do have one little thing to add. It was all good news from Mr. Mullin there, as you heard, outlining how that bond rating process goes. I want to take two seconds to trumpet that a little bit. I have a little background in firework with the schools on this bond thing, it's a big deal, and this rating is the result of a lot of hard work over a lot of years basically, but more specifically, our business office, Dr. Schutz, Dr. Schreger, Wendy, and Deborah, compiling the data, narrating the data, explaining to Moody's all these different nuances relative to that. The net result being a rating that saves us a lot of money. One rating grade difference on that long-term note is about 15 basis points, at $70,000 a point is $1 million that we have saved the taxpayers with the hard work of our staff and the ongoing hard work of all of us to keep our district in the same financial shape that it is. So I cannot overstate how happy we are to get that rating and the amount of money that that saves. Dr. Schreger?
Real quick, just to clarify something that's out in the community, we do have a business manager. When our business manager retired in the fall and the services and the needs of the district then were needed to transition, Dr. Schutz is a licensed business manager, so we do have a business manager, and so for those people who are questioning whether or not we need one or not, we have one, and we will have one moving forward, whether it's, the non-traditional part of what Jerry does is the communications and the school safety piece, which is not traditional to business managers in most school districts, but just to make sure that we're very clear, we do have a business manager on staff.
So I just wanted, my piece was a shout-out to our folks in the business office, we're thrilled with the work that they did, so. Moving on, staffing report.
Make a motion, we accept the staffing report as presented?
Second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Karen, to accept the staffing report as you see it before you. There are no questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Staffing report is approved. That completes our public agenda. We are going to go to convent, executive session to do our superintendent eval. So motion to go into executive session, Section 1985, Sub 1, Sub C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, as I indicated, superintendent eval. And we will be adjourned from closed, so roll call vote to go to executive session.
Second.
Sorry?
Me, no more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I saw move.
Second.
Motion by Mike, seconded by Karen, to do what I just said, and we will roll call vote. On my right, Rick?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Joe is yes?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Seven zero, motion passes.